And John Grothie, may I have a presentation for you? Have a presentation if there are any questions. We'll be asked to state your name and address and any question. And if your question has already been asked, please do not ask me if it can. And we will get the presentation started.
Yeah, that's my cue to jump in. This is someone. I'm glad to be here this evening to share some information with you. I'm a senior toxicologist at the Minnesota Department of Health, and a large part of my job is developing human health-based guidance for a variety of compounds and including manganese. The next slide. So basically, I have a short presentation, but the key things that I want to share with you this evening are, you know, a little bit of background on manganese. What is it and why are we concerned about it? A general overview, very briefly, about how the Department of Health calculates their water guidance values. And then specifically, how we, the basis of our manganese water guidance value, which is based particularly on infants. But then I also wanted to share some background on how EPA developed their water guidance value, which is the value that we also recommend for older children and adults. And then I don't know if we'll open up for questions there or if we wait till after, because John will be speaking after I am. But certainly, I think if you have a clarifying question on a slide that I'm currently on, please feel free to ask that. As Sue has indicated, you can type it into the chat, and she can let me know. I may not be looking at both screens. But if you have clarifying questions, I'm more than happy to answer those as we go through the presentation. So next slide, please. So what is manganese? It is a naturally occurring element, and it's actually an essential nutrient that is needed for good health. So to have our bodies functioning properly, we do need a certain amount of manganese. And the U.S. Institute of Medicine has actually recommended adequate intake rates. You can see those on the slide. And they do vary by age. You may notice that the zero to six-month age group has a much lower adequate intake rate than the older age groups. And there are a variety of reasons for that, which I'll get into. Now, while manganese is essential, there is such a thing as too much of a good thing. So the Institute of Medicine has also recommended upper limits, limits that they recommend that people not exceed for good health. Now, you can see there are question marks in the zero to six-month and seven to 12-month age groups. And that's mainly because there isn't enough information really known about manganese in the very young infants. Now, manganese naturally occurs in food. It's actually elevated, if you want to put it that way, in rice and nuts and wheat germ. And it's also naturally found in many teas, et cetera. And it's also obviously naturally found in water as well. And typically, people get just enough of what they need in terms of essentiality from that food and water. So we really don't have any situations where there are deficiencies of manganese. It is believed that manganese in water may be more easily absorbed into our bodies than that which is found in food. Now, while it's an essential element, we also have known for quite a long time that it's a neurotoxin. And this has mainly come from studies in workers who've been exposed repeatedly to metal fumes that contain manganese. So people who are welders is a common example historically. And the syndrome that they come down with is called manganeseism. And its symptoms are very similar to Parkinson's disease. Now, manganese is much less toxic when you ingest it by, you know, eating something or drinking something than it is by inhaling fumes that have high levels of manganese. And manganese doesn't evaporate from water very well. So there isn't concerns about inhaling it, let's say while you're showering or something. The inhalation exposure is really under work conditions where someone is heating alloys that contain manganese. And so you actually get fumes, metal fumes being produced. Now, there is information, though, that does lead us to have some concern about toxicity of manganese when it's in drinking water, if it's found at high concentrations. So I'd like to go to the next slide, which really talks about who are we most concerned about. And it really is babies. It's really infants. Babies, as we all know, they're still developing. They're rapidly growing. Their systems aren't fully mature for some time. So that makes them more vulnerable for chemicals to cause harm. For manganese, we also know that they actually absorb more than older children and adults, and they are less able to get rid of it out of their bodies. So if they're exposed to high levels of manganese, it's sort of like a double whammy. They take more into their body, and they are less able to get rid of it than older adults, than older children and adults. So that puts them at risk. Breast milk levels are typically very low. They're only about 15 parts per billion or lower. And so when you have elevated levels in water that you use for a mixing-up formula, that causes concern. Now, since manganese is an essential element, the Food and Drug Administration actually requires that it be added to formula. They have set a minimum concentration for formula, but unfortunately, they have not set a maximum level for formula. The Department of Health has done sort of a pilot study looking at roughly 30 different types of formulas and have found typically, the measurements in the formula is, you know, 70s up to 700 parts per billion. So it can be a significant source of manganese as well. And then another reason. So these are reasons why infant may be at risk for greater exposure and sensitivity. But another reason is they drink a lot more liquid for their size. Young infants particularly are on a 100% liquid diet. And so the mom fluid that they drink for their body size is much higher than it is for older children and adults. And so for all of these reasons, they are more susceptible, and they also are the population that tends to be most highly exposed to manganese, particularly when it's found in water that you're using to reconstitute their formula with. So if you want to move on to the next slide. So here is, I've already sort of touched on why we're concerned, but really, the potential risk is we have two sort of lines of evidence that are specific to manganese. So there are some studies in children in communities that have elevated levels of manganese in their drinking water. Several of these studies actually come from Canada. And those studies have reported subtle neurological behavior changes, like, you know, decreases in memory, decreases in concentration, and some effects on motor skills. These studies are obviously not sort of controlled studies. You cannot do a controlled study in humans. That's not applicable. So some of these studies, you know, are sort of complicated by, you know, children were also exposed to other things like lead, et cetera. So it's not completely clear whether the manganese is what actually caused the these effects. But they certainly have been linked and associated with those types of effects. But in laboratory animals, we can conduct controlled studies looking at the toxicity of manganese. And there are several studies that have been conducted in very young laboratory animals that have also recorded neurological effects, such as decreased learning, behavior changes, and motor skills. So there is a body of evidence, if you want to put it that way, that manganese can be toxic when it's ingested, if it's ingested at high concentrations. If you want to go on to the next slide. So this is just a sort of a general figure that I want to step through to show you, explain how we calculate our guidance values. So we review the toxicity information that we have on a chemical or compound. And what we are looking for is the most sensitive effect at the lowest exposure that can cause those effects. So we're looking at very subtle and sensitive health effects. And then we identify the exposure below that, which does not result in any health effects. And this is what we refer to as a no adverse effect level. And then to just things that we may not have complete information about, we add margins of safety. So for example, if the study is in laboratory animals, we may add a margin of safety because humans might be more sensitive than those laboratory animals. That's an example. So we would then lower that no effect or no adverse effect level. We lower it by adding these margins of safety to come up with what we call a reference exposure level. And that reference exposure level is a level at which we would not anticipate any health effects occurring at that exposure level. Now, for many chemicals, there are multiple sources of exposure. They don't only occur in water, but they might also be in our food or the air, in dust or consumer products, et cetera. So in order to make sure that all those exposures together don't exceed that reference exposure level, we only allow a fraction of that reference exposure level to come from drinking water. And then, once we have that fraction of the exposure that's allowed, we then combine this with, if you want to go to the, do another, thank you. We then combine that with how much people drink of that water. And we typically use, I shouldn't say typically, we always use a high-end water intake rate. And by that, what I mean is we use a water intake rate that is much higher than the average person. It's for people who tend to drink a lot of water. And we combine these two pieces of information to calculate our health-based values. So one piece, which is that reference exposure level, we take only a fraction of that exposure level, which is based on sensitive health effects with a margin of safety. And we combine it with people who have high water intake rates. And by protecting the susceptible people and the people who drink high water, a lot of water, we are going to be protecting people who are less sensitive or people who drink less water. So if you want to go on to the next slide? So it's not surprising that basically how we define our water guidance is it's a concentration of contaminant in water that can be consumed by the most highly exposed and sensitive individuals in the population with little or no risk to health. And we assume that people are drinking this water every day. So going on to the next slide. This is specific to manganese. So we, again, look for those most sensitive subtle health effects. And this was in those really young neonatal animals. Now, the levels those that they examined in this study did still result in very subtle health effects. So we actually lowered that exposure level by a factor of 300 to calculate our reference exposure level that we felt would be safe for neonatal individuals. Now, since we know that manganese is added to an as found in formula, we allowed only half of that reference exposure level to come from the drinking water, thereby allowing the other half to actually come from formula. And then since the population that we are most concerned about infants and young infants in particular, we used a high-end infant water intake rate, so higher than average infant intake rate. And we combined those two pieces of information to calculate our value of 100 parts per billion or 100 micrograms per liter as our health-based value for infants. If you want to go to the next slide? So we have, as I indicated in the beginning, we have two sort of recommendations. So we have the 100 parts per billion, which is focused on infants because they're the most susceptible and most highly exposed. But for older children and adults, we recommend using the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's health advisory value, which is 300 parts per billion. And I wanted to just briefly explain what that value is based on because I think it's important for people who may not be infants or have an infant in their household to understand what that 300 value is based on. So if we go to the next slide. So the basis of EPA's health advisory is a very similar sort of process. However, instead of the most sensitive or subtle health effect, their starting point, if I could have them, yeah. Their starting point is actually a high-end estimate of dietary intake. So it's not based on toxicity or health effect. It's based on, in the general population, what is the high estimate of how much manganese people get in their food. And then they added what they referred to as a modifying factor to account for the fact that people, it might be easier to absorb, sorry, my screen just went blank for a moment. It might be easier to absorb manganese from water than it is from food. So they lowered that high-end dietary intake rate by a factor of three. And then, again, because non-water sources like food, we know are important, they allowed only 20% of that reference exposure level to come from water and allowed 80% to come from food and other sources. Now, for the water intake rate, they actually based that on older children and adults. But again, they still used a high water intake rate so that it would be protective of the average person. So if we could have another, oh, there we go. So that is how EPA came up with their 300 parts per billion value for older, which we are recommending for older children and adults. We came up with a lower value for infants because of the specific concerns we have that make infants vulnerable to the effects of manganese. So I think the next slide is just my contact information. So if there aren't any questions, people can free to email me or call me. And certainly, if people have a conversation with their physicians or anything else, and the physician has questions, I'm more than happy to talk to them as well. So please feel free to use my contact information to get ahold of me if you do have questions.
Hello, this is Sue. There are no questions in chat.
Okay. Well, I will mute myself and let John take over then.
Are there any questions here?
I actually got a question.
We actually have a question here at Community Center.
So I bought my house in 2009. I've raised three kids here, a handful of pets, all from infant stage. What are my concerns as far as these manganese levels? Because I have seen a little decline in my young teenager as far as school-wise. And I'm pretty strict on her, so I know it's not because of that. My son is above turn five. I'm a little worried about these manganese levels. I see it's supposed to be 0.3 per liter, 0.3 grams per liter. And right now, we're sitting at like 2. something. So I'm a little concerned. My water bill's been going up every month. I'm not letting anyone drink anything anymore. I'm buying bottled water. I'm wondering why my water bills keep raising when I'm using it for showers and basically washing clothes. So I'm wondering why my water bills keep going up when I can't use the water which my family, I don't, I've never drank the city water. I've always been against city water. I've always been a bottled water guy. But I'm wondering why my family has been drinking water or what I need to worry about as far as the rest of my family that's been drinking water for all these years. I've been here for 13, almost 13 years now. So I'm curious as to why my water bill's going up and what's going to be the effects long-term on my young children who have been drinking this water since they were infants?
If you do have questions about your water, you'd love to call City Hall during business hours. We can open air a call. And every time that the Department of Health can field the other question.
Yeah, I'd love to hear it because my family's been drinking this water for years. Obviously, it's probably been at these levels since I bought my house. And it wasn't a concern until this year. So I'm concerned about my family.
Yes, that's understandable. So we are concerned, again, the major concern is for very young infants in particular. And our water concentration or 100, like I said, is based on that that water was the only source of water every single day of the infancy and that they also drank a high amount of water. So there is some safety measures built into our number. So I don't know specifically. So for example, if an infant is partially breastfed, their exposure would be less. If they, you know, had another source of water, et cetera, their exposure would be less than what our number is based on. So those are things, you know, to consider. I don't know what the exact exposure scenario, you know, is for your kids. And again, it's mainly for very young infants in particular, those younger than six months of age. As food is introduced and other things, there are, you know, there is exposure via food, et cetera. But the, as a, children get older, particularly once you get past, you know, a year of age, the amount that we absorb from food and water is very low, actually. So that's something, you know, to also take into account, which is taken into account with that much higher 300 value. And again, that 300 is based on not a health concern, but based on what people are eating in their diet. So, you know, I don't, if, you know, we have, if you want to talk about more specific, you know, exposures that your children had in terms of, you know, maybe we can, you can give me a call. We can talk about that. But in general, there is an amount of safety that is built in. You know, if there are concerns, you know, we do health concerns, you know, such as attention or other kinds of things, we do recommend that you have those concerns and you discuss them with your physician. And then, as I indicated, if your physician has any questions or concerns, I'm happy to talk to them as well.
Yeah, see, my main concern is my younger two kids. My older kid was three years old when I bought my house. My younger two, well, my second born was an infant when we bought the house. My, and obviously, my son was born less than five years ago. And both kids were breastfed for maybe three months, and then it was straight tap water and formula. And that's my main concern is that they were on bottles by three months old. And I don't want to see down the road that my kids are going to have health issues, get cancer or anything else because of the city water.
Well, manganese is not carcinogenic, so it doesn't cause cancer. And the fact that your kids were breastfed for their first three months, which is when the absorption is the highest and their livers are the most immature, basically, they were protected for that first part of their life from exposure from manganese when they were the most vulnerable. So they were not exposed during that most vulnerable period of time.
Right, but you're saying six months. I mean, six months is a danger zone, basically. And for three, for three months before that six months where they were straight on bottles of tap water, I wasn't buying bottled water mixing formula. I was taking it out of the refrigerator. I got a buddy that worked for Connecticut and he said to filter manganese, there's a, it's called a crossbow on the filter, which you treat manganese with poison, basically, to get rid of or to drop those levels. So I'm worried about my kid's future. I'm not worried about me. I've never drank city water. I wouldn't. I don't like the taste of it. I like buying my Nestle bottled water. But when you're doing four or five bottles a day, you're doing straight tap water, which makes me a little nervous. Because who knows what our manganese levels were back in 2009, 2008? Who knows? It wasn't tested until as of recently.
I don't know if John can speak to the issue of how consistent the concentrations might have been over time or not. I can't let.
See, I think this would have been an issue back in 2007 had it been tested repetitively, like it probably should have been. I mean, we didn't have a water treatment plant. We were straight up using city water. And now, all of a sudden, it comes out in 2021 that our manganese levels are through the roof. So who knows what they were back then? Obviously, probably no one really knows because it wasn't that big of a concern. But now I'm concerned because our manganese levels are through the roof. And I'm sitting here with kids, young teenagers and a toddler. And I got five cats right now to where I've been giving them, obviously, tap water. I got a German Shepherd. I got cats. I got, you name it, to where I'm a little bit worried now. I mean, is my German Shepherd going to tip over and die before he technically should because he's been drinking nothing but manganese?
The, like I said, the health effects that we're, we base our values on. And we have, like I said, for the infants, a 300-fold safety factor built in. So you're not going to see animals dying because of their exposure to this level of manganese.
Well, I hope not because he drinks about two gallons a day. He's a 150-pound blue German Shepherd. I mean, that's his main diet. This is his water. I give him a cup of food in the morning, a cup of food in the evening. And other than that, he drinks two gallons of water a day, which is way more than even my infant's, or my toddler's son drank when he was an infant. So, I mean, I got, I got concerns like, I want my dog to stick around as long as I can. He's one of my kids. And if the manganese is where it's at, I mean, dogs don't get Parkinson's as far as I know. But what are the other long-term effects that affect him now for having drank this city water for 13 years?
So I guess that'll be a question you can discuss with your veterinarian. And if they also have questions, they can feel free to give me a call.
Okay. Good enough. I'll be contacting everyone I need to contact.
Hello, this is Sue. I do have a question in chat. Could you please explain that water high daily intake?
Anybody else here have questions, please?
Absolutely. So, so for example, fortunately, these are typically in liters per kilogram, et cetera. I'm just looking, I know on my house, I tried to write down. So for the infant intake rates that we were using, they would, to give you some perspective about that would be equivalent to, would be for roughly a nine-pound baby. A mean or average intake rate is about 18 ounces a day. But we use a different perspective of intake rate. So we are actually looking at an infant who's about nine pounds who would drink 39 ounces per day, every day, from the same water source. So hopefully, that gives, you know, some perspective on, you know, the high-end water intake rates that we use.
There are no other questions in chat.
Are there any other questions here?
John, whenever you're ready.
Okay. I'm John Grothie, district engineers, district engineer for Combs West of the metro and south of St. Cloud. And I'm going to share with you about the concerns of manganese and methods of treatment for reducing manganese in drinking water. Before I launch into this slide, I want to clarify its current regulatory status. Manganese is not currently a regulated contaminant as Safe Water Drinking Act, other Safe Water Drinking Act contaminants are. The human body, as Pelman mentioned, requires a base level of manganese to maintain normal health functions, which the body derives from many sources, not just drinking water. And while manganese is not regulated by the Safe Water Drinking Act, we are in we are in the trending toward a future regulatory approach, whether it is EPA, somebody sets that, MCL, or individual states will take on, take the lead. We do not, we don't know that at this point. However, we do know that we're firmly on a course of addressing manganese health risks, as we should. And we are beginning to proactively, proactively meeting the manganese levels by, you know, water treatment expansions and upgrades and and whatnot. So there will undoubtedly be a lot of compliance as the next few years go by on parts of water systems. Here at MDH, we are sampling across the state. We're studying best available technologies. And we're exploring future funding sources for addressing manganese. All of this will take place over what will be an extended period of time, probably several years before we see more movement as far as regulatory wise. Next slide, please. Thank you, Sue. Montrose is one of many impacted community water supplies in Minnesota, numbering close to about 200 systems, ranging from levels of up to 2,000 and to slightly above 100 parts per billion and everything in between. The geographical occurrence of higher manganese seems to be in the southwestern part of the state. But high levels can sometimes be seen in the north part of the state and elsewhere. So where does is Montrose situated in all this and what what is its current treatment? Montrose finished water currently comes from a treatment plant two, which they've had for a while. And as of this fall, we have new operation, well, number six, located in the water treatment plant to the northern town. Plant two is supplied by wells four and five. Plant three is supplied by well six, new well six. The treatment provided at the plants is chlorine, fluoride, and phosphate addition, fairly simple treatment. There is currently no filtration provided to remove manganese or iron. Manganese results at new well six are not shown in the slide, but the the well will be sampled by MDH several times in 2021 to establish an average. Preliminary results do show that it's somewhat lower in manganese, around 600 parts per billion raw water. Next slide, please. In 2020, MDH began sampling statewide manganese sampling program, accompanied by guidance and information for both water system managers and consumers. Montrose wells were sampled in August of 2020. We later recommended they provide notification to the public of the findings, which they have done. Next slide, please. So what is the city doing now? What can Montrose consumers expect for the future? The city is currently taking the initial steps to provide drinking water below 100 parts per billion, which is the health risk limit set for infants. Montrose is in preliminary conversations with MDH and its city engineer on how we have to proceed. Most likely, it will take a plan to expansion where filtration is added as part of the treatment. Not only will filtration reduce manganese to below 100 parts per billion, but filtration will provide additional benefits of reduced iron, as well as organic metals and other such things. Planning, design, and construction could take a few years. The good news is that there will be an endpoint where manganese is no longer an issue. Next slide, please. What can consumers do right now? First, please understand that the health risks of manganese in drinking water are isolated all up to ingestion. And inhalation was mentioned, but not not for showering or bathing. So the water is perfectly safe for bathing and showering. Cooking with typical amounts of water that are minimal would undoubtedly pose minimal risks as well. Manganese and iron also, as an aside, cause staining. Manganese, big blackish and iron reddish. If so, if you wish to test, what we recommend is if you wish to test manganese levels of water at your house, perhaps as an exit center or home water treatment plant, you can call and have an accredited lab send you bottles of information. And you can send or deliver your collected samples to them for analysis. This last bullet point shown with this website address provides an MDH link for finding a certified lab near you. So next slide, please. What can consumers do right now? So continue, I will run through a few various treatment options. And I'll try to identify which are the most accessible and inexpensive and how it ramps up from there and talk a little bit about how well it will work. So let's talk about point-of-use treatment devices, first of all. Let's start with reverse osmosis. Reverse osmosis can be a point-of-entry, which is as it comes to your house. These are obviously much more expensive. Point-of-use membrane filters, there are single tap installation, only can range from 300 to 1,500. They remove the widest range of contaminants, but yet the stream of wastewater that's fairly high is closer to membrane. And they also require maintenance. But it's it's a very, very good mode of reducing manganese. And can't really specify the degree to which it removes the manganese, because it certainly is based on the particular manufacturer and model. Carbon filters, let's talk about carbon filters. These can attach to sink, they can be a simple pitcher, like the river or similar products. Contaminant removal depends on the porosity. Some filters are already certified, remove chlorine, fluoride, hydrogen sulfide, iron-laden manganese. They require a little less maintenance than most treatment forms, but they do require you change the filter often. Also worth mentioning, the filters in refrigerators, some refrigerators used for water and ice dispensing. These remove manganese as well to a certain degree and and it's 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 very individual, individualized. I would also, I had to divert from the slides, talk about softening for a minute, just standard water softening. Because most of us already have softeners. A water softener will remove calcium, copper, iron, magnesium, and manganese. Individual results, again, vary depending on the software, so it's maintenance and operation and entered water quality. I didn't, I I forgot to mention, as far as carbon filters, any kind of filter, is a new filter is working most efficiently, efficiently. And as it continues to be used, it it kind of degrades in sufficiency. So it's important to change out your carbon filters often. Moving on to point-of-entry and whole-house filters. We see these in basements, sometimes in garages, but also near where the water enters the building. These operate a little more vestingly than point-of-use or sink attached. But they are treating all of the water that comes into your house. But they require water, and are substantially more expensive, ranging from several, the $600 to several, several thousand dollars. And without, with any treatment device, just as an aside here, it's important to look for ANSEF or I'm writing a laboratory certification. And there's research, and you yourself should do some research performance. And there is a a link at the bottom of the slide. And this is, will take you to a lot of information on home treatment and fact sheets on home treatment and various various treatment methods and comparing them with another. I do want to also mention bottled water, perhaps the least expensive option for long-term temporary source of drinking is bottled water. Bottled water is still a purifier, would probably contain negligible negligible amounts of manganese as you'd expect. And I don't know what the levels are of manganese in spring water, but I'm sure you can always check these out of the manufacturer. Finally, combinations of treatment. If you had in your home a combination of these sets of treatment, let's say, removal manganese, say softly followed by a carbon filter, you would have a significant significantly more better removal of manganese. And again, we recommend that you test the third step one to make sure. And I believe that the city has, through some independent studies, taken a look at various historic removals or removal rates of manganese around town. I think they are providing some sort of fact sheet or something that is available available to you. And you can take a look at that to see some some performance information on on treatment, various types of treatment in spaces around your area. And that's all I have for this presentation.
Anybody here have any questions?
Sue.
Yes.
Yes, is it orders, Sue, yes.
I'm I'm going to, we had a question in chat that I shared with Helen. Question was kind of, so was the volume of water for adults? For adults, the U.S. EPA environment protection group uses two liters of water per day. And a follow-up to that is, so with the levels in our water, how much can we consume before we exceed recommended levels for adults?
Yeah, I'm working on that second one. I had to look, I had to look up what EPA's reference dose was. So I'm I'm working on that, I'll get right back to you.
There are no other questions in chat? Or anybody on the call wish to, you might get asked questions for John, for Helen? There are no questions from the community center?
Maybe we'd know, we could talk about independent testing, since he didn't bring up. Do you want to talk about independent testing?
John, is there, you know, the water regulators from Montrose?
It has not addressed.
I believe it. The only one I could think of would be either one or the other. And I'm not sure, I don't, I don't. Yes, and why did you want to ask the question of that or?
Just to to ensure everybody on the call knows how to contact the water group. My my guess would be on the city of Montrose website under public utilities.
Yes.
Contact information.
Yeah, I'm sure that it's, in fact, I know it's there, that information is on their website. And contact information as well.
Okay, and I do have a question for you, John. Many point-of-use systems do not list manganese treatment performance. The person asking the question has tested his water, whole-house, post-softener, and bottled water.
Yes, I would be curious as to what the what the manganese levels were, you know, if it is Montrose water, was there a change or?
I'm not sure. There are numbers similar to the city well. After his two filter systems, post-softener is lower, bottled water is the lowest.
Yes, and of course, yeah, bottled water would undoubtedly be the lowest at this point. A number of years from now, it might not be, if, you know, we want you to add filtration into the into the scheme of things. But what you're aiming for, of course, is for adults, with all infants in the household, is is a 300 mark. And if if you're close to that 300 mark, it certainly, or below it, it certainly is, I mean, that that is what you want to see.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a response from Helen for the volume of water per adult. Partly depends upon body weight, assuming a body weight of about 155 pounds. A person could drink 1.1 liters of 900 parts per billion manganese of water and receive 20% of the EPA's reference level. The the reference level is not based on dietary intake because it's not a health effect?
No, it is based, I just want to remind people that EPA's reference level is based on a dietary intake level, it's not based on toxicity or a health effect. So I think that's an important thing to remember for that 300 parts per billion. It's 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 based on a high-end manganese intake just from the general population's diet. So and and just to remember that that's what that EPA's reference level is based on. So in order to stay below or at or below that level, which is not a health effect level, you could still drink a little over one liter a day. The 900 parts per billion comes from simply averaging the concentrations that John had on slide number 13, the treatment plant two, well four and five. So, you know, an average of that, those three values, average of those three average values was 900. So that's where you got that value from. And that still allows you, that still allows you to have 80% of that reference level coming from your food.
Okay, thank you, Helen. John, I do have a question for you. Does the well water need to be chemically treated in order to filter the manganese?
It it often needs to be, not chemi, not, yes, it's sometimes going to have, what's that, permanganate? There's there's, you can, there's pre-chlorination. What the the object is to oxidize the manganese and the iron and to to sort of become something you can filter out. And so so there is chemical treatment. But it's standard water treatment chemicals. And they're not, they're not in any ways something to be concerned about as for as health risk themselves.
The writer wrote, my point-of-use test was above 1,000 parts per billion.
From what kind of device?
You know, I I think it might be helpful to have this person contact you, John, to?
Yes, I think, I think, I think. Yes, I think, I think, I think that would be probably wise. He can, he can email me. There's my email address, so, and I will respond.
Do you have an additional question? I've heard manganese growth in other communities around us. How widespread is this issue?
Well, as I said, you're talking about 200 systems, community systems, and that's a lot. And they're all over the state. Not 200, it's something less than that, the exact number, but, but it's significant and it is widespread. It is conscious municipal, it's nationally. And so, yeah, it's going to be a big change for many systems, but it is, it is, I guess I would say the 200, you know, 188 systems or whatever it is, is a significant.
There are no further questions in chat?
I think there are no other questions. We do have the city engineer, Jerry Lowey, here, and he's going to talk a little bit. We have done some independent testing around the city and for areas, as well as just about testing itself.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight and expressing your interest in the, in the manganese. And I wanted to take a minute to thank the representatives from the Department of Health for their presentation tonight, too. So, the city does have some results from some independent testing that was conducted within town. And what independent testing means is that residents throughout the community contacted an accredited testing laboratory and physically sent their samples in and received some results. This information is all available on the city's website, so there's definitely an opportunity for you to check it out there. But again, as John alluded to, the results vary significantly. We do have some, some data that shows a softener reducing the level down to 25. We do have some hard water values that are, that are at like 600, some filters here also in this information around 500. Kitchen sinks we have at a level of 15. So what does this information tell you? Basically, manganese levels definitely vary. And if you're concerned about it at your house, you definitely need to contact an accredited testing laboratory. The, in the slides here, in this folder of the presentation will be available on the city's website. There is a link that identifies those accredited testing laboratories. I have heard of some people buying these little dipsticks or test cups. That's not an accredited testing laboratory. So I just want to remind everybody that if you do have concerns about your manganese levels, you definitely need to contact an accredited testing laboratory and some of these commercial products that are available on Amazon or wherever, that doesn't qualify as an accredited testing laboratory. So take a look at the city's website for the results and the wide range of values that are obtained. And again, if you do have some concerns and want to get your water tested, make sure you use an accredited laboratory and that information is available on that presentation. So, thank you.
John, this is Sue. I do have another question. If there are 100 magnesium systems that are affected, what is the state's long-term plan to fix this?
Yes, that's a good question. As we said before, we're investigating just best available technologies. We are investigating, we're exploring, you know, sources of funding. EPA certainly is, is going to have a hand in potential funding. We, we have low-cost loans that may be come available soon for, not low cost, excuse me, low-interest loans that may be soon become available for upgrading systems and putting infiltration systems. So it's, it's all about just, it'll be about funding and it'll be about, you know, kind of a slow, slow progress towards compliance for all these systems in the near future. It'll take, it'll take several years, though.
Okay, thank you, John. So to answer the question that just came in, the timeline is a couple of years, but it is?
Probably a couple of years to even get started, you know. You know, it'll take, I mean, probably, probably I'd say you'll see a lot of compliance within a five-year timeline, I think.
So two follow-up questions. One goes back to the testing of the water and then we'll come, well, let me go on with the timeline for what the state is doing. What is going to happen for our health in the meantime? And then I'll go back to the previous question.
Oh, in the meantime, I think I tried to, I put up a slide, you know, and mostly talking about, you know, dealing with, with, with this period, you know, in between the, in the interim, homeowners who are, have high manganese across the state will undoubtedly be looking at, you know, any one of those alternatives that were listed as far as home treatment, ranging from bottled water to carbon filters to just other forms of water treatment. Yeah, that's, that's what I would say.
And then the other question, would iron in the water mess up test results? Does water, does iron have an effect on test results?
Not certified test results, no.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions answered and asked in chat.
Do we have any other questions here?
We do not have any other questions in the community center.
And another question to comment, what if people cannot afford home treatment? If John alluded to there would be low-cost loans to, evidently to have you, if people cannot afford home treatment, what are other options?
Okay, yeah, the low-cost loans are for our, our water systems. And I think that there would have to be, well, the low-cost solution would certainly be bottled water, which a lot of people drink bottled water across, you know, that I've talked to, across the state. And so, it's not unusual. And I, I don't know, I don't think it would be, just for drinking, when you're buying bottled water for drinking purposes only, you know, that's minus bathing, showering, lawn watering and all that, so it reduces the amount of water significantly, so.
So I do have another few more questions. The timeline for the low-cost loans again is for public systems?
Yeah, I would say, I, I want to correct that, not low cost, but low-interest loans. But it's, yes, it's for public systems, it's for municipal systems. And, and then there are, there are probably, you know, this will unfold and, and right now it's not real clear and how this is all, this is all very new. So obviously, funding is something that's in play right now and it's a kind of work in progress. So we don't have all the answers, but we do know that there will be, you know, I'm sure that there will be funding sources that we will be able to share with people in the future.
Another question, so can I install a carbon filter in my whole house system and see lower manganese levels?
Yes, you could, but I wouldn't be very, I think the key thing is, is to, to really do your research and involves a water treatment consultant or a manufacturer that is very, has a proven track record and, and of course NSF certified and, and just some, just a really good track record in performance and not a lot of complications or history or maintenance problems or things like that. That's what we want to avoid.
Okay, and two other questions or comments. Many folks cannot afford to buy water. We've been distributing bottled water at Grace Place but can't seem to keep up with the demand. Many people have been donating, but I'm unsure if that is sustainable. Another comment, all of this is expensive, so what is being done to prevent inequities?
I would have to, I'm just going to have to say that I don't know at this point, but we will be discussing, I'm sure I will bring this information, these kind of questions home to the Department of Health and we will discuss it and, and see what options might be out there.
Thank you. We will compile the questions for a future discussion. And there are no more questions in chat.
Does anybody have questions here?
So thank you for your participation today. I don't know if the city has final comments to share.
There are no more questions here, and we just want to thank Helen and John and Sue from the Department of Health for joining us this evening and all residents, more for this meeting.
Thank you. I will end the session.
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome. Thank you for joining us, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a general question of the council? I figured the Department of Health probably couldn't answer this, so I thought I'd pick it's okay. My name is Kim Niska and I live on, live on Second Street. You can flip the microphone on.
Okay.
Right on the top there, just flip that.
Right here.
Yep.
Okay.
Kim Niska, Second Street's up. As someone mentioned, we've been collecting bottled water and getting donations from various different sources since this all began to Grace Place and it's starting to dwindle, obviously, as with, you know, anything kind of does, it kind of goes down. And I did create a GoFundMe to try to help with, you know, something maybe a little more long-term, since it does sound like it's going to be a couple of years before they get things going, which is totally understandable. It's a big project, obviously. But there are a lot of people in this town that are in desperate need. I mean, living paycheck to paycheck, you know, some are not even making it paycheck to paycheck, they're in the hole. A lot of new mothers, fathers. And so, I'm kind of wondering what we can do to get to something where we can help these people that don't have the funds on a daily basis to make sure that they have safe drinking water for their babies, for elderly, for people who are maybe ill. Because obviously with higher numbers, you know, we talk about children are really number one concern, but there are people who are, you know, health-wise are not doing well. A lot of elderly. So I'm just wondering what we can do as a community to help everybody in the interim? So some sort of source, I know someone had mentioned Casey's was willing to do something. I'm not exactly sure what that looks like, to help people fill bottles, things like that. But is there something we can do as a community in the interim to make sure that these people who can't afford the water or desperately need it, can't get it, to help them do that? So is there something that we can work towards or is there discussions regarding that at all? Because obviously the bottled water is eventually going to go away. I mean, people are just going to stop donating it, it's just what happens. So we need something to make sure that the people that need it get it. So is there something that we can work towards or, any, any ideas been floating around with the council or the mayor? I, you know, obviously he's not here, but.
I'm not here.
Where? Oh, you, I didn't see you, sorry. But, okay, so question to you then, has there been any discussion regarding that to help the people that can't get the water?
So we've, we've talked about a lot of different kind of scenarios of what we could try to do. Feasibility-wise, if we were to buy bottled water or whatever for everybody in town, I mean, the city would end up just going broke and we'd have to get bought out by some other city, but, you know, so we've talked about a lot of different scenarios of what we could possibly do. I've been in constant contact with our state rep and our state senator. They're working on trying to get us some funding, hopefully, maybe, we'll see, it's basically what they said, sooner than what the state is actually looking at. So, you know, other than that, I don't know if there's a whole lot that as a city that we could, could really do for financing everybody's water, just because the feasibility of it is, it'd be, you know, 15, 1600 homes, you have to buy all this water for everybody. It couldn't just be some people, you'd have to do it for everybody, no matter what, so.
Right, right, but I'm talking about something like, you know, you know, a pub, they have those, those places that you can fill your water bottles up with. Like some place in town that people can go to that can't maybe afford to go to a pub and get that water, that they can get it for free at some sort of station or something. You know, maybe it's a, you know, like a pub, they can bring it into Casey's or whatever and offer it as a free, free for people. Because it'll have a filter in it and it should remove the manganese. So if someone can go fill up, say a gallon of water, two gallons, whatever they need to get it, that seems like it would be a low cost for the city itself.
You're talking like some sort of like water truck type of scenario that has a filtered water that would be dispensed out of it?
Yeah.
I think she's talking more along the lines of like a, like a filter station type deal, like a, like a water bottle filtered.
Right.
Not like a whole, not like a whole truck or anything like that, just, you know, a common area where someone can come in and whatever, put their little five-gallon jug underneath and.
Absolutely.
Fill their water.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
Look, like Casey's isn't selling coffee right now because they're using the city water. I mean, what, what's stopping the city from putting a culling infiltration system into Casey's?
Right, right.
As our main gas station, where if people do need infiltrated water.
Right.
Go up there, even if it's at a huge discount, I mean, overall, the cost of the city wouldn't be that bad to just put a filtration system into the gas station.
Yep, for ten, for temporary or for permanent, whatever, just until, you know, because they're talking five years long-term. And I get that, you have to build the thing, you have to get the financing, you have to do all that, but we need something in interim. but we need something in interim for the people who really can't get it themselves, can't afford it, because there are a lot of people that cannot afford to do that. A lot of people on social security living, you know, till the very end of the month and they may run out, you know, and I've experienced that with my own dad and, and it's devastating when you can't have, you know, healthy water for somebody because they can't, simply can't afford it, when there should be something that they could do that's relatively inexpensive for the city and potentially, you know, free to them, you know, if, if someone needs it, they can just go get it.
For, for anybody that's in need, the people we need to contact is Wright County Community Action, Wright County Human Services. They're the people who have the funding and the availability to help people. The city of Montrose is worried about the infrastructure and the safety and support of said infrastructure. If we decide to go and put something into Casey's, for example, um, then we're gonna have a line of all businesses in town also wanting that. And then there's also the liability. If we put one, uh, filter station right out here, they get it, so there's gonna be the cost of the filter, the cost to put it in, and let's say somebody tests it and it comes back one day with high manganese, now who's liable? So the city has to worry about liability concerns. Well, granted, the system we already know has it, but now that specific point of use needs to be maintained and kept up to standard, just like private well almost at that point.
I hear what you're saying about liability, but we're talking about human lives here that need water. And I, and I get there's liability, I get that, you know, there's, you know, you have to look at all kinds of different scenarios, like, oh, am I gonna get sued for this or sued for that? But really what it comes down to is we just need clean water for the people who can't afford it. And I know they can go to, you know, Wright County Action or whatever, but there are some proud people that won't do that. But they bought a house in this community or rent in this community with the understanding that they would have safe water and now it's not.
But you have to also understand it is still safe. The Department of Health is not saying it's not safe.
For babies, it's not?
For babies, but for, for adults, it is.
Well, it says three hundred and below for other people, it's not three hundred and below. It isn't.
If it, if it wasn't safe drinking water, the Department of Health would shut our wells down and our system down. They wouldn't let us even sell the water to you, let us give you the water, you know, whatever I wanna say, however I wanna say it. We wouldn't be able to pump the water out if it wasn't safe, the Department of Health would shut it down. So it's still considered, they're still considering it safe.
The levels are higher than what they should, should be. So obviously it's a concern for many people.
And I get that, I understand that, um, but it's, it's always been there. I mean, like he said, the whole state of Minnesota has it, it's always been there, it's never changed, well, we don't know, but chances are it hasn't changed since they drilled the very first well.
Yeah, we don't know, I guess we can suppose it has.
Yeah, so I mean, it's.
We don't have proof of that.
And we have people that have lived to be ninety-seven years old, ninety-seven, ninety-eight. So, I mean, it's, I get what you're saying, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to say, like he said, they don't even have an answer, you know, the Department of Health.
Right, right, and I'm just, I'm just trying to think kind of outside the box because, you know, obviously we're getting this bottled water, we're doing the best we can to try to help people that even can't get around, we're delivering water, we're doing what we can to help. But I just wanted to find out if we can have something where somebody doesn't have to worry about that and, you know, we all just have to work together to get through whatever. So, but if we can, you know, brainstorm, that'd be awesome. I appreciate it.
So can we cook with this water?
Um, according to.
Boiling it doesn't take away magnesium.
We can cook with it, it doesn't take away.
I mean, you're using a minimal amount of water when you're cooking, so it's not, it's not really gonna affect you, but boiling the water doesn't take, doesn't drop the level.
And can they coffee with it?
Well, that's why Casey's quit doing coffee is because boiling it doesn't take away any magnesium.
Right.
I'd be curious to know what they're using for baking and all the other products that they sell.
It probably is in the water.
Yeah, they're using water and that's where the, that's where the state says that when you're cooking, you're using minimal amounts, so you're, it's not really affecting you that much. I mean, it's not like pouring yourself a liter of water and just chugging away.
Yeah, you can see by that list, there's so much variability.
Oh, there is, I, you know. And what scares me is I live on the corner of Hill Street and First Street and I'm looking at the change in numbers between the two and I'm like, okay, so why do I go by from my house, living on the corner of First Street North and Hill Street? I gotta get it tested.
When you look at those numbers too, the thing to look at is, is where they tested it, because some of the higher ones are outside, not filtered, not softened, and the lower ones are sinks, fridges that have filters already on them. And we, we have people who have, I mean, they have sophisticated filtration systems and they, you know, they don't have the lower numbers, so, but there's people that just have softeners on that list that they have some of the lower numbers. So it just, it just depends what you have in your house.
Right, like, like, I mean, I buy my fridge filter from Menards, I don't know how good of a job it's doing. I mean, the best bet is just to get your water tested and see what you're sitting at.
Right, and just have it tested at different areas, like on your fridge.
Between your spigot, I mean, if you fill up your dog's water dish outside, get that tested, obviously, you get your sink water tested, get your fridge water tested, obviously put in a new filter in your fridge. I know for the first year and a half that I own my home, I didn't change my filter in my fridge. I was the first time home wired, that wasn't the last of my concern.
Well, and if you have high levels too, it could be something as simple as your water softener isn't working the way that it should, so you might need to buy a new water softener. It's the cost of, you know, homeownership is replacing your appliances and making sure they're maintained and.
Right.
Stuff like that, which is not a cheap thing, especially if you go outside the city system too and live on a well like I do, that has its expenses too. I pay monthly, if something goes wrong with my well, I'm paying through the teeth, right out of the checkbook.
Yep.
So there, there's big differences, positives and negatives of well systems and, um, you know, city systems and stuff like that, but, you know, the biggest thing is get your stuff tested, don't rely on those dip, dipstick tests, don't rely on the TDS testers that are sold on Amazon, um, you know, send it to a lab, so that's gonna get you comparable results to what we got from our random testing that we did.
But there again, we have people that can't afford to do that. Many people in this town cannot afford to do that. Those things are expensive, they're upwards of a hundred dollars or more to get the testing done. That's for my, they're not.
No, twenty-five bucks.
Twenty-five, okay.
I have something, something good about that too. I went up to the city hall on Monday, talked with a girl behind the desk who told me, "Why, why my water bill is so high this month?" One oh one forty-five.
That's, that's something you have to talk with the city about, we're not here talking about water bills and water costs.
Yeah, call the city, I, I've talked to so many people on that line to where the city's honestly telling a lot of homeowners, well, you must have a leak in your system, when they know they don't, they got their water shut off to the outdoors, so I don't know why that's being, but I call the city 'cause I don't know why that's being used as an excuse to where you must have a leak.
The, the, the number one thing is to check your systems, 'cause, you know, and I, I see this whenever people say, "Why is their water bill so high?" My water bill has never been out of a range of about thirty dollars since we've owned our house. It's, it's always been within the thirty dollar range, up or down, the months that we're gone out of town, it's a little lower, the winter months where we're homeowner, it's, it's on the higher end, but it's never outside of my thirty dollar range every month. So the, the number one thing is to check your systems, check your toilets, make sure they're not running, make sure you don't have like a, a leak somewhere outside in like a sprinkler system, 'cause I've heard that where people have their sprinkler system, they're not gonna nick in their system and it leaked all into their yard, they had no idea, but all of a sudden their bill is four hundred dollars more that month because there was a leak somewhere. But the, the first thing to do is always check your system, just to make sure you don't have any, anything running anywhere, no leaks. And then at that point, then if you talk about adding another meter so that if you're using like outdoor water, that it's only counting that, so that you don't have, um, 'cause if you're like outside, then you're not using the sewer, the sewer system for your water as well, so then that lowers the cost. So there's, there's a couple of different steps we can take to kinda look at that stuff, but like I said, the, the very first thing to do is just to check to make sure you don't have leaking, you don't have any of that going on at home, and then take the next step of the system.
And that's what kinda baffles me, is I don't have a sprinkler system, my outdoor water, well, I go down to laundry room every fall, I shut them off. I just changed my, well, I shouldn't say just, three months ago I changed my toilet to one that real extreme efficient ones to where it's like tap, done flushing, done, it's like a half gallon every flush, but yet my water bill has gone up and my family's not drinking the, the tap water anymore, which is kind of blowing my mind, is why, is my water bill going up, but I'm obviously using less water. The only water I got running is for shower, baths, laundry, basically.
Well, your meter tells the truth, right? So you have all your faucets shut off in your house, go look at your meter, if that dial's spinning, you've got a running toilet or something going on.
Yeah, see, I put in a Brady toilet, I know it's not running.
So, I mean.
And you don't ever hear.
If that dial is not spinning, you're, you're using more water, that's all there is to it.
Well, it can't be, 'cause they, they all used to drink water and now they aren't.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, the water, you're either using the water or it's disappearing somewhere in there, okay? After your meter.
I, I just wanna make sure that our water bills aren't going up.
We haven't changed the rates since early twenty, twenty twenty we changed the rates, that's the last time. Like back in January of twenty twenty we changed the rate, so we haven't had any rate increases, so if your water's going up, it's your water usage.
Yep, it's all based on usage.
And meters can't read backwards, so it's gotta be going through your meter somewhere. Toilets, toilets are notorious, if you've got, I know you said you switched yours out, but if the flap doesn't go down tight and it's just barely trickling, you won't even know it, but.
My old toilet, that was the big issue, 'cause I go to bed at night and all of a sudden, just before I'd fall asleep, I'd hear the toilet.
Yep, yeah. A lot of people find out that they have a downstairs toilet that's doing it and they don't even know it because they're not down there, so.
I haven't finished my basement bathroom yet, so I know that's not where it's going.
Yeah, we had a gentleman had a leaky toilet, he went out of town, didn't know it was leaking, he had an eight hundred dollar award. So, you know. You know, if you look on the list, I was one of the guys that had one part per billion, okay? I've got a water softener that was installed in the house that was built back to tail end in two thousand and six, and I have a typical little carbon filter in my refrigerator.
Yep.
And my, my water was tested at one, one part per billion.
Yeah, see, that's why I wanna get mine tested. My, my house was built in old too, I, I still got the original water softener and the wife lets me know when it needs salt and just look at the channel. And I got the same carbon filter in my fridge.
Yeah, change that, that, that'll really help if you haven't changed it. I buy them online and I get like three at a time and they're a lot less expensive if you go to Menards and just buy one.
Yeah, see, I, I mean, I've changed them since, I'm obviously didn't do it for the first year, you know, and now I'm pretty much virtually changing it. And now I still wanna change it, get my water tested, 'cause now I'm really curious, I'm seeing the difference between First Street North and Hill Street, like I said, I live right on the corner, so I don't know who they tested on Hill Street, I don't know who they tested on First Street, I'm seeing the change in numbers. Now brings up my concern, 'cause I'm looking at Hill Street, the outside faucet, which a lot of time is spring through fall, I take my dog's water dish and I just hit the outside spigot, fill it up, put it right in the garage, and I'm seeing that as the highest number on the list, where I'm like, okay. I mean, I'm, I'm not really getting why there's such a wide spectrum of these numbers. It's, it's all.
The outside isn't gonna go through your water.
Right, it's not going to, but I mean, I'm, I'm looking at other numbers that say hard outside faucet and like Lovewood Circle, I'm seeing four fifty-seven, I'm seeing Hill Street at eight forty-five, I'm wondering why there's such a high spectrum of change in numbers, when we all use, we're supposed to all be using the same water. So, I mean, that's, that's one of my concerns, 'cause I'm, I'm looking at this stuff like, how?
Yeah, it also shows you what, what the wells tested at on there too. So it's not on that column. Oh, it's not on that one? No, I left that off. Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not on here.
It was on the letter, that was my problem.
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
And you, you're testing that how often, once?
Couple times a month, for sure.
Couple times a month?
Yep. And the numbers haven't changed at all.
Obviously it's testing.
And some of those on that sheet you got, some of the people have softened water outside and they think it's hard, that's why there's a variation in the numbers. I mean, they're not getting cleaner water on one end than the other. All three wells are blended, it goes through the whole system.
Well, see, what's weird though is, I mean, you look at some soft kitchen sinks and look at their numbers versus all these hard outside faucets, whether they're softened or not.
Right, they're all hot.
I mean, it's such a large dramatic change in numbers, it's, it just doesn't make sense whether they're softened outside or not.
Well, and our parents always used to say, "Don't drink from the hose."
Yeah.
Just saying.
But it was the best water.
There's reasons why it's the best.
Yeah.
If, if you're concerned with the pet stuff, like, like they said, reach out to your pet. I know that I talked to mine and they had said that, you know, with my rottweiler, that my dog needs more manganese in his diet than other dogs, just because they need it for their bone strength. So animals process it at a different rate, so I, I'm not, I'm not a vet, I'm not a doctor, but that's just what I've been told, what I've read, is that they process it differently than humans do, so, you know, and vets will tell you, different ones, so you'll ask five and probably get five different opinions unless they tell you two, so.
And I believe that, I mean, like, you know me, I lived out on the street from Giles, I got a really large blue German shepherd, which is just like a rot, you're worrying about their bones or hip displacement and everything else, so that's, that's another step I gotta take, is talk to the vet about him, 'cause you know, he's pushing thirteen years old, but he's been drinking this water, mostly out of the outside faucet since I bought him, I bought him three months after I closed down my house, so. Now it's like, is he gonna live, be sixteen, is he gonna die this summer? He's like one of my kids, I obviously don't wanna see him go away again or.
Yeah, I know, I was, I mean, I know growing up, one of my neighbors, they had their dog for nineteen years, their, their dog was older than their youngest kid, so.
Right.
And I run on that dog and it passed away and it's, you lose a member of the family at that point.
They do.
And we get it, I mean, we, most of us have pets too, they're on the council, so we need to throw them out there. I got two, you check your dog up, are you on the tree of them, bro?
Yeah, they're really great.
I'm up there.
That's my boy.
My girl stayed away from you.
Yeah, that's my boy.
Dog, yeah, trust me, yeah, I think that's where he has it.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at. Where do I place myself?
For sure. Yeah, no, I mean, like you said, that, you know, what these are showing is that, whether you think it's like this is the water softener, that is, looks with the data, like that's the best thing to get us, I, I actually feel it here, dude. So like my house, I just, I just.